All right, welcome to a meeting in the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, May 7th. This is our work session. Tonight is our regularly scheduled work session. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware they're being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens to speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience of citizens' logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, which is in reference to Board Policy 8340. I'd like to start this meeting off with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Sullivan.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we kick off the work agenda, work session agenda, I would like to congratulate North Penn High School on winning their third national award from the United, or U.S. News and World Reports. It was well deserved, so. Tonight is review of performance indicators, and who's going to run the show tonight?
Okay, Mr. President, that'll be a combined effort. I'll be leading the majority of it, but I'll also have Dr. Holman, and Mr. Schock, and Dr. Carter-Moan contributing to some of the slides. If you don't mind, I'm going to slip over to one because we have a PowerPoint. I'm going to shift over one seat here. Each cabinet meeting, and we meet once a week as a cabinet, the first thing I open the meeting with is the report and the progress toward meeting our goals. And if there's data to report, we go over that data and see if we are progressing towards meeting our goals. I also ask for examples of individuals or groups who are exceeding or meeting or falling short of our core values. And majority of the time, it's a celebration of people that are exceeding or meeting, but occasionally we do have some that are falling short, and we talk about that. But the primary focus about tonight is the progress toward meeting our goals, and what data do we monitor? Some examples of data that we monitor, and many of these are dashboard indicators. By dashboard indicators, I mean things that we can monitor, make adjustments midstream as we're seeing the data come in, but we do monitor RTII progress. You've seen presentations to this board about RTII. We monitor our grade assessments, our benchmark assessments, Lexile's foresight data on the academic side of the operation. We monitor our work order completion time, our substitute fill rates, our participation in voluntary exit interviews, our percentage of highly qualified teachers per No Child Left Behind, write to no requests, our cable television programming, traffic we're seeing on our website. We look at how many press releases we've had, the media coverage that we've had, our Twitter use, energy use, indoor air quality ratings, cleaning satisfaction, our facilities usage, money raised by the Education Foundation, employee retention, accounts payable time, our payroll accuracy, our uptime for our computers, some discipline data, some bullying incidents, out-of-district placements, technology systems uptime, and district demographics. Now, we don't look at those at every cabinet meeting, but during the course of the year at various times, we look at these bits of data. So let me go walk you through some of these. I will not have data on all of these due to the interest of time, but I just want to talk to you about some of the things that we're monitoring. For example, here's our website traffic. From July 1st to May 7th of this school, I should actually say July 1st, 2012. There's a typo there, but July 1st of '12 through May 7th of '13, this particular school year, we had 660,000-plus people visiting our website, of unique visitors, making over two-and-a-half million dollar, excuse, two-and-a-half million visits with over eight million page views. So they're looking at about three page views per visit. They're on there about three minutes, three-and-a-half minutes on average. The bounce rate is 45 percent, which is the number of people who simply look at one page and leave. We have about 25 percent new visits, so over two-and-a-half million visits to our website done by 660,000 unique visitors since July of '12.
I'm good for 150.
All right. We did 100.
A dollar a visit.
A dollar a visit. There we go, there's a fundraising idea. We had 116 press releases that have been done since September, and regarding Twitter, since May, or as of May of 2013, we have now 1,937 followers on Twitter. That's up 705 followers since June of '12. We did tweet so far this year 214 times. Since back in July of '09, we've tweeted 617 times. We send little tweets out regarding various accomplishments. We share videos through North Penn Television. We provide minute-to-minute updates when we have different issues to be able to do that. On YouTube, since July of '12, we've had 89,000-plus visitors, looking at 223,000 minutes of video. So we have close to 90,000 visitors looking at us on YouTube. Write to no requests, I won't go through all the, you know, exact detail on all these slides because we just don't have time, but you can see our write to no requests there. How many have been completed in 30 day, excuse me, in five days, and how many needed the 30-day extension? We had some where they were denied because it wasn't relevant, and we have some that withdrew. And you'll have an opportunity to look at these slides in more detail. We just don't have time. I think there are about 40 slides total, so there's not enough time to get into the detail on all of these, but I just want to give you a feel for the kind of data that we're monitoring. The foundation does mini-grants, and you can see there over the years, the number of mini-grants they've awarded, the amount of the mini-grants. In addition, we've had about $120,000 received in '11, '12, and '12, '13 for donor-specific projects. We had the Inclusion Specialist Grant at Gwynn Nor, we purchased AEDs, we've gotten some EITC money, and we have a goal to improve and expand upon that. The total assets of the foundation as of June 30th of 2012 have grown now to a little over $150,000 presently being held as assets by the foundation. So there's some plans in the works to spend that money. Already 120 grand raised in '12, '13. Demographics, Diane, you want to add? You did some of these slides. Talk to us about the kindergarten enrollment.
Sure. What you're looking at is a graph that shows for the past approximately 14 years, the kindergarten enrollment trends. The number of live births, if you're not familiar with that statistic, is the number of children that were born in the townships that make up the school district in any given year. And when you're trying to project kindergarten enrollment, what you do is you figure out, on the average, what percent of those children actually enroll in North Penn schools. When you see the trend, the interesting part of this trend is the number of live births has gone down consistently from 2001 to the present, but the number of students actually enrolling in kindergarten has stayed about the same. Actually, in 2001, the percentage of live births that enroll in our schools was about 58 percent, and last year it was 74 percent. So we're getting a greater percentage of the students who are born enrolling in our schools, which frequently translates into less students going to parochial and private type options rather than public school type options.
And this is kindergarten. We do get additional students then in first grade who don't use North Penn for kindergarten.
Okay. Just to look again at enrollment trend, the elementary enrollment, when you combine all grades, has stayed at, bounced right about the same level, right around 6,500 students. So it's really kind of, the population change is really kind of leveled off in those lower grades. Secondary enrollment, you can see that over the five or six years, the high school enrollment has declined because those larger classes from years ago are graduating, and the middle school enrollment was declining a little bit, but is again kind of evening out because the student population isn't getting larger, but it's not getting smaller at this point either. Okay? When we look at the race and ethnicity breakdown, we can see that the trend has been that the Asian population continues to grow. The white population really has declined by about the same amount that the Asian population has grown. The other populations have stayed about the same. That red line for multiracial, just to explain that, up until the 2012 school year, multiracial was not an option in the federal race and ethnicity codes. So students and their families were not able to pick that as an option. So what you see a little bit in the last two years is that multiracial category is starting to come up. It results in a decrease in some of the other categories because parents now can choose that option where they couldn't before. Okay? When we look at our economically disadvantaged figures, we can see that over the past five years, we have had an increase in students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. The figure was at 17-point-something or other in 2009. This year, we were, on October 1, we were up to 22 percent of our students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. So part of that may very well be due to the economy, that we have more students qualifying than we have in the past.
So that's about 600 student increase?
Correct. Correct. Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a significant slide to see your free and reduced lunch increasing that much, and it's hard to suss out what's due to the economy and/or what might be due, if any, due changing demographics.
That's correct. When we look at the special education enrollment, again, it's stayed right around plus or minus 16 percent in terms of percent of students in the whole population. That's slightly higher than the state average of 15 percent for special education enrollment.
That's about 20, 21 hundred?
Yeah, ballpark of 2,000, yeah. When we break that out by disability, what you can see as a trend is that when we consider, each bar represents 100 percent of the special education students, and then looking at what's the distribution of students by primary disability. What you see is that there's actually, the two places where you're seeing an increase in identification are autism and something called other health impaired. Autism is on the rise, autism diagnoses are on the rise really in most school districts. It's a trend that you're seeing across, not just across the county, but across the state. The other health impaired frequently, but not always, that category is used for students with attention deficit hyperactivity disorder who have difficulty to the, to the level that they need an IEP for it. So you're seeing rises in those two categories as a percent of the total population. Okay? English language learners would be our ESL students. That number actually has remained pretty steady at about 3.6 percent across the entire time period we looked at. Okay? And finally, mobility. Mobility really refers to, it's calculated by figuring out how many students enrolled after day one of the school year. They weren't here first day of school and enrolled sometime during the school year. Percent mobility can give you an idea of the transitivity of your population, which can inform needs of accommodating students who come in mid-year. What we saw, we've only had three years of data on this because this was not calculated in the district until three years ago. You see an increasing mobility of students. Now, some of that, elementary you frequently see has a higher mobility than the secondary because there are more schools, so you pick up kids who are transferring from one elementary school to another within the district as opposed to transferring in and out of the district. Okay? They've got smaller catchment areas, so the mobility looks a little higher. But that is a trend we're watching because as, if, if you see a trend of families becoming more mobile, it actually really raises the need to have consistency in program from school to school, so that if these kids are moving around the district, you're able to have them pick up in the new school where they, exactly where they left off in the old school. And honestly, the mobility and poverty frequently are closely connected to each other.
Okay. The next slide is regarding a technology system uptime. Majority of those are 100 percent. There are some areas where the district website was down, or the IEP plus software was down, but we monitor that very, very closely. Fran, you want to do the next two slides?
Sure. When you look at this, you will see another school district, which is a Baldridge winner, Iredelle Statesville School District in North Carolina. When we submitted our CAPE application as part of the Baldridge process, we were advised that we should use as a reference point another Baldridge winner. And you can see that we have topped 100 percent, and really kudos to our secondary school principals in scheduling that we have properly placed all of our teachers. In looking at some other Baldridge winners, which are not listed there, in Pearl River, New York, which is a previous winner, they have achieved also 100 percent. But Montgomery County, Maryland, which is the most recent school district winner of the Baldridge, has 96.7 highly qualified, so.
Just so everybody understands, highly qualified also takes into account whether or not somebody's working under an emergency certification. So when you have people that are, you know, teaching in a subject area where they don't have their standard full certification yet, they're simply working under emergency certification, then you must report that, and we, a couple instances where that was the case.
What's the definition of highly qualified?
That the certification matches the course that they are teaching.
Right. And it has to be.
In simple terms.
Yeah, and it has to, in simple terms. It also deals with people that have emergency certified because they're working on getting that certificate. So they might have a certificate in social studies, but they have an emergency certificate in some other area, or depending on some of the ways we've done our ESL programs over the years, there've been some issues with some of those.
How come others have, and our, 99.3 is higher than others?
We had a, two scheduling difficulties there with two teachers and the courses that they were teaching with our, in our middle schools, but we rectified it.
Yeah. One of the things that occurs when they calculate that is, we have to assign every course in the district a state course code, and those state course codes are linked to what the state will say are the appropriate certifications for those courses. So when Fran referenced the secondary principals, it actually wasn't just the scheduling, it was also going through every single course this fall and making sure that every course was tied to the right state course code so that teachers didn't look like they were not highly qualified when in fact they are.
They were. Right.
Okay, Fran, employee retention.
Yes. You can see here in the last six years, okay, our employee retention, if you look at the red line there with the professional staff, has increased from 91 percent to 97.75 percent. And really, reasons for leaving the district, really, the two primary reasons are a spouse or a partner has had a job location, or the second reason is family circumstances change for that. And again, if we use as our reference point, Iredelle Statesville, okay, we have done, I think, a good job in retaining our districts. And again, to point to Montgomery County, Maryland, which just is the most recent winner, they have 95 percent retention. So we do feel good that it has increased over the last six years.
And you see a dramatic increase in the support staff there from 79 percent in '03, '04, on up to the number that you see there, close to 97, I think that would be.
And actually, yes, you can see it's almost a 21 percent increase going over the six years for support staff retention.
Energy, we've heard about that, and we did, you know, not want to have that in here, but, you know, 75 is what you need in an Energy Star in order to get the Energy Star Rated Award. And if you look what we've had, you know, since September of '08, all the way up to what we have now, it's just dramatic. We had a rating of 43 as a school district in '08, and up there in that 94 percent range now in, in the present year, so that's dramatic. This slide also shows then by building what the ratings are, and you can see how dramatically we've increased our Energy Star ratings and that, and it's just a tremendous story here in North Penn. We monitor electric usage. We monitor fuel oil usage, and you can see that over the years. We monitor natural gas usage, and again, I won't go into detail on these, but if you like to look at them later, you're welcome to do that. We monitor indoor air quality. We monitor cleaning quality. And as we live with vacancies, it's important that we continue to monitor that. This is looking at it in the '12, '13, and the other slides were more historical. Work order efficiency, when the work orders came in, you know, when they were open, when they were closed. Our turnaround time on work orders, monitoring that. There's a historic slide on work order turnaround time.
What? What's that?
You can see the various years, they're in different colors. Okay, financial indicators of financial health. Bob, you want to take this slide?
Sure. One thing that the number of states are looking at is the percent of the budget spent on instruction. So North Penn here has been spending over 60 percent in recent years. I actually went back 10 years, five years ago, the most recent year that I had state information, and then the current year. No state information was available, but we are exceeding the 61 percent that is the national average last year.
Uh, not sure why I did that.
That's it, folks.
I think the projector shut off.
We lost our connection.
Jack, is the bulb, is it light on?
Yeah.
Can we go back to our slide for instructions?
Kurt, can you go back several slides at this point?
I will. What, do you want to see Frank? This one?
The dark blue is North Penn at about 63 percent.
The state average is at about 58. No information for the state in the most recent year, but we exceed the national average at 61.
This is a percentage of the budget that would be designated for instructional expenditures, and you have other areas that are more in the support area than a course. Okay, Bob?
The state and others are looking at indicators of fiscal health and fiscal distress to predict whether a district's getting in trouble. One of the things they often look at is how much debt you have, ours being around 100 million compared to the total revenues. And so we have seen that number come down to where we're currently at about 58 percent compared to a state number almost twice as high. So our debt's relatively low compared to the rest of the state on average.
These and some of the other slides are important when we have our bond ratings, and we'll be having that, and did you already have that conference, or it'll be coming up soon?
We talked to Standard and Poor's on Thursday, and they will focus on fund balance and some of these other factors that they watch the trends on as well.
So what's rating schools you can get, Laura and Jack, what's the highest?
I believe that's correct. Yeah.
What are we?
Well, we're a couple below that, but we've held constant. Ours has been affected by the state's situation. The state's credit rating and their support of public education has started to affect bond ratings. Next slide. I think we've missed a couple slides here, but anyway, we'll take a look at this one.
No, you'll have more later, Bob.
Okay. This is an issue that we're studying, and this is updated over a similar slide you saw based on data from two years ago. What this looks at is, in North Penn, we're spending about $1,100 per student on total transportation and about 220 on non-public transportation. This is all districts shown by a dot in the Philadelphia suburbs, which have similar amounts of congestion, similar type of road network. Now, what we need to be looking at are districts in this quadrant up here that are spending less in total but dealing with a more expensive, non-public challenge than we have. So if we could move from here to here, that's $3 million. So we're watching two districts, one Westchester, that did a major study including five districts, including both of these and, and North Penn and Downingtown and some others. And they started in the last three years, a major effort to reduce their transportation costs, and we're following them, meeting with their staff here in the next couple of weeks to really look at what they did. Now, this is unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. The state gives us a maximum of 8 percent. We've been fairly constant at about 6 percent.
And again, that's another factor that the bond rating folks look at.
Now, this is a chart that shows two important factors. How much market value of property is there for every student, and how much personal income? So North Penn is showing up here with market value of properties, and when we look at the other Montgomery County districts, you find we're in the upper half, but you find significant disparities. In terms of personal income per student, though, and that means weighted average daily member of students, it's a measure of students weighted by kindergarten being less than the rest of grade levels. But anyway, what you find here is that we are really kind of below the average in personal income, and what supports our tax base more is commercial and industrial properties.
And those are the two factors that are used when the state determines an aid ratio. They look at your market value, which is the sum total of all of the real property and its value in your school district. As, as we all know, there are some, you know, large employers here that have some pretty valuable property, of course, Merck being the largest, which contributes towards that. But then it's also very instructive to always continue to monitor your personal income on a weighted average daily student basis like that. And as Bob was saying, so you see, you know, as you might expect, Laura Marion being the one that has the most market value per weighted average daily membership, and also the most personal income per weighted average daily membership. You can see some other school districts there that are also providing education for the children in their communities.
So this, this is the aid ratio, and we are just about at the minimum 0.15. But what you find is that in Montgomery County, we have six or seven other districts that are at the minimum aid ratio. If we were a reading, the aid ratio would be 0.85, meaning that when you run a formula of state funding, whether it's the basic education formula, the transportation formula, the state's making up 85 percent versus 15 percent in our case.
As you know, 0.15 is the lowest that it can be. Even if it calculates out less than that, it defaults to 0.15. So as a matter of fact, there are some districts, Laura Marion, Wissahick, and some of those would actually be under 0.15 if it were permitted to be under 1.5, but by statute, it can't be lower than a 0.15 in your aid ratio. But that determines your state aid when they do their calculations and what they send you from the state. Hey, Bob?
Now, this is revenue per student and how we rank among the 500 school districts. If you look down here, in total, our revenue is 112 on the scale of 1 to 500. So we are roughly in the top 20 percent of total revenue per student. In local revenue, we're in the top 10 percent. We're number 42 in ranking. Now, conversely then, we're on the, we're almost at the bottom of the 500 in terms of state and federal.
So we, as everyone knows, don't get that much state aid. We don't get all that much federal aid. Most of the responsibility in this school district falls on the local taxpayers. That's why our percentage there would, or ranking there would be lower, if you will, for local.
But you're seeing quite a few on here that are near the bottom of the 500 in terms of state aid. Now, an equalized mill is a way to look statewide and say how much local tax effort is being made. And what it does, it takes your total revenue from property tax and says, if we were to have a tax rate applied to your market value, not your assessed value, which it actually is applied to, but the market value, which can differ significantly, how much of a mill would you need to generate your total revenue? So this gives us a good indication of how much tax effort we have. So we're in the lower tax effort in the county and in the state. We're 318 of 500 statewide, 17 of 22 countywide. Now, this is looking at it a little differently. This is the actual mileage for Montgomery County, and over the past 10 years, we've been ranked 15, ranked 16 for four years, 17, 18 one year, and it came back to 17. So that's 17 of the 21 in this case. So those are some important financial indicators. The state's looks at them, our bond rating agencies look at them, and I thought you might be interested in seeing those as we deal with budgetary issues.
So that was quite a bit of information, but it helps to give you a feel for the kind of things that we're monitoring here in the school district. Some of those, as I said earlier, are dashboard indicators when we're looking at, you know, are we getting hits on the website, and are we having Twitter use, and how are people accessing information? I did not put in all the slides that we have, of course, on the academic ones, because we have gone over those at previous board meetings, but I thought it'd be a good idea to bring in some of these other things in so you could see the kind of data that we're monitoring. Of course, the academic stuff is extremely important to us. When we have those benchmark tests, we can predict where we're going to fall then in our statewide testing, and then if we need to make adjustments, provide additional support, we do that. So that's a very important part of it. The other thing that we're looking at very closely is software to help us with that. You've seen presentations and heard from us over the last few months about technology and the need for us to be able to upgrade our software and provide additional support for students, both for enrichment and also for students who need additional support, who are taking longer to be able to master the content. So we'll be bringing a recommendation to you shortly regarding that. We do have money in our capital reserve that we're intending to spend, as I explained to you a few months ago, to be able to provide that software for our students. Just, just tremendous ability out there nowadays. Just tremendous ability out there nowadays with what they're putting on the market regarding software and how you can help students to individualize their learning and to help them with their pathways to learning. Are there any questions about any of the items that we talked about?
Can I start? First? The 22 school districts. I was on the IU for many, many years. I've never met the 22nd school district representative ever from Brinnathen.
Yeah, they don't.
I've never seen him, so I don't understand why you put him on the chart.
Technically, they're kind of in a... And there was a tiny little bar for Brinnathen. I'm thinking, I don't know what they spend money on.
They're at the bottom of everything. They never, they never participate in any conversations. They're never, they're never, they are included in some of the numbers that we get from the IU, but I'm telling you, I've never met the representative in six years, seven years.
In one of the years, they had seven students, and another they had 35. So they're off the chart. They're number one or number 500, depending on what you're looking at.
So it's hard for me to fathom what you're talking about when they call them a school district.
No.
Let me tell you, and you saw their aid ratio numbers, they're not even in the scope of getting anything because of the wealth in the district. So it's interesting to see that. Yeah, it's five blocks, right? It is. It's like five or six blocks if you go down there. But it is. It is what it is. Any questions of Dr. Dietrich or any of the other central office administrators? You want to make sure this presentation's posted on the website so that people can have access to it?
Absolutely.
For information. Joe, you have any questions you want to ask? Anything you need as far as direction from us for this?
No, we just thought it would be important for the board, and very importantly, the community, to know the kind of data that we monitor. Again, we monitor a lot of academic data also, that's not a part of tonight's presentation. But there are a lot of things that we monitor, and it's important to be agile and to be able to be responsive as if we see there's something happening where we're not on the right trajectory, we need to make adjustments to be able to get back on. So that whole dashboard, you know, concept is important to us. Likewise, the benchmarking concept is important to us. We want to be able to know where we rank. We, I think we do a great job, but it's very difficult to say that we're best in class in everything we do. I've yet to meet any school district that is, you know, perfect or best in everything we do. So if there's some areas where there's some other places that are, you know, outperforming us, either due to a lower cost or a higher achievement, or whatever it might be, we want to learn from those places. We have actually, and not to brag, but we've had a lot of people looking at North Penn recently about what we're doing. We won a national award for the energy. We did a presentation last Monday. A lot of interest in that. Bob just did a presentation today on innovation celebration. We had quite a few school districts here wanting to learn more about that because they like to do something similar or participate with us on a regional basis. And it just goes on, the medical healthcare field, we've spent a lot of time and energy on that. We have a lot of great ideas, what we might be able to do to continue to have cost avoidance in that area also. So we have a lot of people looking at North Penn regarding what we're doing on that. And we're very willing to share because I think we can learn from each other.
Kurt, are we still doing the data walkthroughs at the high school?
We have a slightly different way. They were called data walks at one time. Now, we have heat observations, and we have other ways that we get in there to do those because some things evolve over time. It's the same concept. It's the same concept of getting in there, getting a snapshot of what's going on. The heat observations have to do with the technology and, you know, that type of thing. Diane, I think, were you out? Robyn said she was out today, as a matter of fact, doing some, so...
Yes. Yes. Heat stands for Higher Order Thinking, Engage Learning, Authentic Connections, and Technology Integration. So those are the four criteria that are looked at in that short visit. And the idea really is to look in the aggregate. Do you see those things happening on the average at the level that you would like to see them?
All right. I want to open it up to the public, have a chance to question or ask questions. Anybody wishing to speak to board, please step forward, state your name and address, and sign the audience's citizen's logbook. Any further questions for Kurt?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. It was a nice presentation to get an update on some of the things. I know that you guys monitor a lot. It is a testament that you can track this kind of data and make adjustments as we go to make it better for everyone. And in the end, we get a better product, which is the education for our students. So I'm happy about that.
Thank you.
Any motion to adjourn?